For invocation and the pledge, and this morning we're honored to have Reverend James Brooks from First Christian Church to preside the invocation this morning. Thank you, sir.
Gracious God, we are thankful for the opportunity to gather this morning to conduct the business of our community. We are thankful to live and to work and to enjoy the fruits of Washington County, all that it provides for us. We pray that you help us to keep good stewardship and be mindful of our neighbor as we gather today to celebrate the freedoms and the opportunities provided. Pray this in your name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll call our meeting to order. First up is approval of the minutes of June 24th, 2025. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion to second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh. Thank you.
John, you need to abstain from that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I will abstain. I was not at that meeting. Thank you.
Four oh.
Four oh. Mr. Wagner?
Good morning. A couple of thank yous here. First of all, to the staff and everybody involved in Ag Expo kickoff. And Ag was a great week, and we were hosted down there for a breakfast and a tour. And that was, they do a pretty good job on that Ag Expo. I think they got a little hot this year, but the market sale turned out really well. And I want to thank everybody for that. Also, I wanted to thank all the staff at the Boys and Girls Club. We had ribbon cutting on that last, week before last. And it's going to be a great facility for Washington County. It's a fabulous building. If you get a chance, you might want to stop by and take a peek. And then, last but not least, I want to thank all the staff and everybody involved in ribbon cutting yesterday for the Hancock Overlook Park, County Overlook Park. It's right up there past the Apple Tree Inn on Old 4144. And it's beautiful scenery, and it's done very nicely. So, nice place to stop and have a lunch or just take in the view. That's all I have.
Mr. Lutherman, you want to go next?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, John. Just two items this morning. First of all, I hope everyone's enjoying their summer thus far. As we look forward to fall in Washington County, I would like to encourage our citizens to consider continuing their education, current career perhaps that they're involved in, or personal enrichment at Hagerstown Community College. And information's available at hagerstown.edu. Second item I'd like to mention this morning, on Thursday, this past Thursday, the 24th, paramedic class 24-03 graduated 12 students from our Public Safety Training Center. And 11 months of training, and now they're ready to serve the citizens of Washington County. And we wish them all the best. That's all I've got.
Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, President Barr. I just, two things. I guess the Ag Expo was a great turnout. All the kids in 4H, all the care and taking care and preparation of the animals, transporting the animals there, the cleanup afterwards. You know, a lot of hard work went into that. I spent four or five days out there, mostly during the day. My kids had a grand old time out there, helping clean pigs and pens and stuff. We didn't have any animals, but they enjoyed helping their friends there. So, that was a lot of fun. I want a special shout out and thanks to Ad Fulton for his very large donation in support of a new building there that will allow more of the events to be undercover in a big pole barn that, you know, he's financing. And, you know, Ad Fulton and the whole family's been very generous to Washington County, and in particular, the Agricultural Center. So, a big thank you to Ad Fulton for that very large donation. And we look forward to that work beginning after the summer. And then, I'm only halfway there on the ice cream trail. I think a couple of people have already completed it on the commissioners' board here. I hope to finish it before the end of the summer, so I can get the grand certificate from Mr. Horowitz and crew. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Good morning, everyone. Just want to get back a little bit. I want to thank Addie Nardi for the opening of the Boys and Girls Club over there on Pennsylvania Avenue. The ribbon cutting, it's well attended, a big event for the community and the youth in our community. I also stopped by the Community Free Clinic Mud Volleyball out on Western Maryland Parkway for those not sure that we allowed them use of one of our properties for this event this year because of some scheduling conflicts with another property. But they had like six or eight teams out there. And the Community Free Clinic, I believe, did well with that fundraiser. And also, the weekend, I, last weekend, I attended two of the Funkstown reenactments in downtown Funkstown and at their park on Sunday. County employee John Phillips is also a councilman over there. And with his team, they do a great job in organizing those reenactments. I think I was told over 400 reenactors were there for that, this weekend, and that continues to grow. I also did stop by the Williamsport MML chapter meeting they had at the Springfield Barn. It was great to see our colleagues at the municipal level. And again, I do want to mention the Ag Expo and Fair. They do a great job down there with the kids, bringing their animals to market sale and all the displays. And yes, I also attended the Ag Breakfast Recognition for Ad Fulton for his display, or generous donation for buildings on that property. And the Sidling Hill Scenic Overlook, I was there yesterday. The sign is spectacular. And we've taken somewhat of a property that was a little dilapidated and turned it into a grander property that once shined Western Maryland-looking west from Hancock area. So, thanks to all involved. And Michelle Gordon, I have to give you credit. When I approached you about doing this, you were instantly sold on the idea. So, I thank you very much for that. And there's many others to get credit, but I think yesterday I admitted you. So, I wanted to make sure you know that we're all appreciative of your efforts on that. And I did also attend the paramedic graduation class 24-03. Very exciting night for many of them. Those folks, you see their families and support mechanisms that's in there. So, there's a lot of people down at our Public Safety Training Center to thank. I know our instructors give it all their best. And again, the Public Safety Training Center's turning out to be a jewel in this county. And I look forward to completing the vision with the burn building, the defensive driving course, and the tactical village, other necessities to keep our volunteer and career first responders trained and ready to turn, to return home safely and fight again. And I do, on a somber note, we lost two county employees last week, a young man named Darius Hutzel and Derek Bish, who was a DES paramedic in Surille. He passed away on the two-year anniversary. Derek passed away two years on anniversary, his graduating from the first paramedic class. So, to those folks and their family, our deepest sympathies during this say of time. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Yes, good morning. And first off, I'd want to, again, want to say thank you to Pastor Brooks for being here this morning, your willingness to come and participate in our meeting. Also, I want to congratulate Addie Nardi at the Boys and Girls Club for the ribbon cutting of their fine new facility. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend that event. My schedule was just such that that was a conflict that day. The one thing I do want to report on this morning, that thanks to Meredith's Hospital Association and their willingness to make some tremendous inroads into this community and a college of osteopathic medicine. The new class is up and running. And I've noticed that they had a picture taken in the last, probably within the past week, of their white coat ceremony. So, quite an accomplishment in the last three years of what, some of the good things that are happening in Washington County. So, again, thanks to Meredith's Hospital and all their initiatives and investment back into this community. Also, Commissioner Klein, I too want to reach out our heartfelt prayers, thoughts, and concerns to the family and friends of the two employees that unfortunately passed away last week, Darius Hutzel and Derek Bish. Way too young, and it saddens all of us. And so, we just, our heartfelt prayers and concerns to their families. So, with that, we'll move into staff comments. And we have one this morning. County Administrator Michelle Gordon.
Thank you. I also attended the Sidling Hill Overlook ribbon cutting ceremony yesterday. I'd like to thank our staff in Public Works, particularly our Highways Building Maintenance Department for the cleanup, design, and construction that they did there. They did a tremendous job getting debris and trees and things like that cleaned up. I'd also like to thank Aiden Gregg. He is the student at Boonsborough High School who created the sign. Very impressed with his work. He did an excellent job. I'd like to thank our staff for the work that they did at Ag Expo, particularly Kelsey Cadel, who is our agricultural business specialist. I'd like to extend my condolences to the families of Darius Hutzel and Derek Bishop, I'm sorry, Derek Bish. We did lose two very valued employees last week. It's very sad for the county. I'd like to express my condolences to them and remind all of our employees that we do offer Employee Assistance Program, or EAP, through our Human Resources Department. So, if you're experiencing any thoughts or concerns or sad feelings as a result of the loss of two county employees, please reach out to our HR department. Williamsport High School recently sent out a press release regarding a find of asbestos at the Williamsport High School. I just wanted to provide that update to our listeners today. There are several construction and renovation projects that are, have been, or are still going on there that have been halted as a result of the environmental safety issues. The school is currently closed due to the discovery of a limited number of asbestos fibers outside of a designated mitigation area. Their team is working very closely with state and local agencies, as well as environmental specialists to address the issue. In the event that Williamsport High School cannot be occupied by the first day of school, Washington County Public Schools is reviewing alternative options. If this becomes necessary, they will share more information with the Williamsport High School community two weeks prior to the first day of school. If you have any additional questions, please reach out to Washington County Public Schools at 301-766-2800. I'd like to also congratulate our most recent graduating class, 24-03. Wish them well in their success as they can start their county careers. We do have a meeting tonight with the Town of Hancock here at the County Administration Building. It starts at 6:00 PM. And the last thing that I have is Williamsport High School, I'm sorry, Williamsport Library. A few meetings ago, we did sign a letter of support for funding of the new Williamsport Library. They have asked for an updated letter of support that I'll need a consensus for. They have revised their scope of work for their project. It has increased from 17.7 million to 21.9 million for the total project cost. The total amount being contributed by the county has not changed. The Board of County Commissioners confirms their commitment for fiscal year 27 of $402,000. The total project estimate to be funded by county funds throughout the life of the project, or the two or three years it'll take to complete, is still $4,489,060. So, I just need a consensus to have Commission President Barr sign that letter.
Will you ask for consensus to support the project? And our financial commitment is the same at this moment?
Correct. It's the same, completely the same, no change.
I'll support that. It's a consensus.
Yep, consensus.
And that's everything that I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Under tab number one, Washington County Gaming Commission's Annual Report and Fiscal Year 2025 Gaming Fund Allocation Announcements.
Good morning. Karsten Aron, Senior Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management. The Washington County Gaming Commission wishes to present their annual report to the Board of County Commissioners and announce the Commission's fiscal year 2025 funding decisions. In fiscal year 2025, the Gaming Commission had available $2,347,408.90 for distribution to local charitable organizations and the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. This figure reflects a decrease in revenues of $66,876.99 when compared to the previous fiscal year. In accordance with state statute, 50% of the funding received is allocated to Washington County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association, and the remaining has been allocated to charitable organizations in Washington County. In May of 2025, the Gaming Commission also received 86 funding applications from 75 charitable organizations. The total amount of funding requested from those applications was $3,232,196.90. The applications were reviewed and considered by each commissioner. After review, the group deliberations in gaming and a gaming hearing in June, the Gaming Commission determined the appropriate funding allocations based on the published and approved guidelines for distribution of gaming funds, which is consistent with the state statute governing the distribution of such funds. This will have no additional fiscal impact to Washington County. Are there any questions?
Just a point of clarity. When you said it was reviewed by the Commissioners, you mean the Gaming Commission?
The Gaming Commission, yes.
So, there's no confusion that we didn't?
I apologize.
No, that's okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve. That's what you need.
I think it's no motion.
No motion.
I would like to extend a big thanks to all the Gaming Commissioners, the chairperson, Matt Schnibley, Mike Hanson, Mike Stanford, Selena Wilks, Don Wintermeyer, Merrily Kearns, and Paul Crampton Jr., and also the staff that supports in the gaming office, Laura Reamy, the gaming manager, Steve Davis, our part-time inspector, and Julie McRath, the senior office manager.
So, your next step is to send these funds out?
The, the next step will be to, the press release that I handed you will be distributed. We will also send out letters today to either approve or decline the, the applications. And then we will, and then the checks will go out.
I see the funding amounts, for example, for adult services at 42%, health services 33%. Have these remained relatively consistent through the years? Is there much change, or is that?
There wasn't a change last year, but I, I will be happy to look that up and find out.
No, I was just curious if it was a trend that, that seems appropriate.
Okay. It, it, it remains the same from the previous year, the year before.
That was my question.
But I, I don't know if, if the years prior to that.
You, you don't need to investigate it further. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next item under tab two is the Governor's Budget, FY24 Capital Appropriations Grant.
Karsten Aron, Senior Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management. We would ask that the County Commission move to approve the acceptance of a capital appropriations grant from the State of Maryland Capitol Budget for fiscal year 2024. The amount of the grant award is $2,250,000. The Washington County Office of Grant Management, on behalf of the Emergency Services Department, is seeking approval to accept the grant funds that are allocated for Public Safety Training Center. The grant from the fiscal year 2024, the State of Maryland Governor's Budget, and is a capital appropriations grant. This grant is the amount of $2,250,000 and will be used for the defense driving track at the PSTC. The fiscal impact will improve the PSTC with 200, will provide the PSTC with $2,250,000 in funding toward the cost of a defense of driving track in its, as part of its tactical village.
Motion? Discussion?
Second.
We have a motion to second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under tab three is 2025 August Toberfest. I'll get that right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we just wanted to come and say again, thank you for being a support for us. I can't believe this is going to be our fourth year in the county already. It just, time flies. So, we're super appreciative. We love being out in the Ag Center. We use every single area that we can possibly use. Just a little bit of some things that we did last year that we added to the festival. We added a veterans' area. August Toberfest has a huge veteran following, and we wanted to provide support and have an area located just for people to come and swap stories. And we got to talk to some of the people that sat into the little tent, and they actually did not know one another. They were from different branches of the armed services. They thought it was amazing. So, we'll be offering that again this year. So, we're truly excited. We partnered with the county, the Chamber of Commerce, and they help us get with the flags that we can place all around so that you can see all the armed services. So, we're super excited to offer that again. We also had the band location changed. So, that was much better this time. It's more centrally located. You can see the bands, the dancers from all around the areas, and they project right into our Huff Brown Beer Garden. So, that was a nice change. That will be staying the same. We also decided to hold the first beer sign competition, and that went over extremely well. We ended up having three or four of those competitions, and we're offering them again this year in a much more controlled manner. So, we have that offered on our schedule. So, you'll see that throughout the weekend as well.
Thank you. And with some of the updates, we also have a hospitality card that we introduced last year. So, moving out to the Ag Center, it's a more broad area, which means more walking, and some of our guests are all ages. So, the hospitality card helps people get from point A to point B if they need that assistance. Some other updates are, this year, we actually have a new hotel sponsor. So, we are partnering with Fairfield Inn and Suites. That's on dual highway. They provide a sponsorship to us, and also, they are providing a discount to guests that are staying there as well. And then, we are changing our cornhole tournament. So, we have a fest house that's just for gaming, and that was the cornhole tournament. So, now, that is just going to be family fun games. So, we were able to purchase some new games. That's like Giant Jenga and some fun items. It's family-friendly out there. Our keg tapping is going to be changed to 145 this year, just to help with logistics. And then, lastly, tips. So, we do accept tips. That's off beer, off food, and that it always gets donated to a nonprofit here, and we're going to be donating to children in need this year.
And with the keg tapping, we are changing it a little bit. We're going to change the actual footprint. Normally, we send an invite out to every delegate or government official in the state of Maryland. And it, over the years, it's become very popular. Unfortunately, what that's done is it's delayed the length of the keg tapping and what the purpose of the keg tapping is. And that is the official kickoff for the weekend. And it's also to talk a little bit about what is August Toberfest. We're a sponsor with, we partner with the Hagerstown Basil Sisters community so that we can help take children over to Basil, Germany, and then the German students come over to us. And we really want to make it all about, like, what our foundation is. And that's the sponsorship and the logistics of the children. As well as, last year, we did do our first crowning of the Mr. and Ms. August Toberfest, and that went over really well. So, we're doing that again this year. So, we do want to invite you guys to come out as well. We just will not have anybody standing up with us. It will be solely the Board of Directors and the Sister City Foundation and any students that will be there. But we do give you an extension for coming out. Just let them know that you're a county commissioner, and you can get in and, you know, mosey around the facility. The only thing I, I will say right now is we do see that volunteerism is down all around from what we hear from other folks. We are struggling a little bit with that as well, especially for Sunday. So, we are hoping that we will get some people to volunteer, or we're not going to be serving much food. So, we're, if you know of anybody that wants to serve food for a couple of hours, we do offer a great package. offer a great package for our volunteers. We do provide training on Thursday night, so you can come pick up your T-shirt. We offer pizza party for you. We do a training of what your position will be. We give you free entry for the day of, either before or after your shift. This year, we're adding an extra ticket that you can give it to somebody if you want, or you can come in free the next day or the opposite day of that you're volunteering, and then we do provide you with a meal after your shift. So we do try to give back to those volunteers. We do know that three hours and four hours is long-serving food, but it's also fun at the event as well, so I will open up to questions.
Jill or Mary Jane, could you state exactly when it starts and when it ends, and how people can contact you, either of you, for the volunteering?
Yes.
Okay, because I think it's important to get that specific information out.
Sure, yes. So this year, and thank you, this year it is August sixteenth and seventeenth. On Saturday, gates open, it's from eleven until nine. Sunday is eleven until five. We have a website, augustoberfest.org. We have a Facebook presence for Augustoberfest. If you go to the website, there's a link that says get involved, and you can sign up. There's a Saturday volunteer button and a Sunday volunteer button. It shows the positions we provide and a description about each position. There are time marks so that there could be four-hour shifts. Sunday's a little bit shorter, so there are shorter shifts. So we have shifts like serving food, or taking the food order and providing the food, cooking, running, doing trash, or helping the utility guys with delivering waters and wines and things of that nature to the other stations. The pretzel kids walk around and they sell pretzels, and we do provide SSL hours for any of the ninth grade to twelfth grade students.
That's what I was going to ask next, so good.
Yes, I have put a lot of kids through. Serving the food and doing the pretzels is a great area for them.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay, again, wish the best for you for that weekend, and trusting the weather cooperates, and you have a good weekend.
Thank you. And we do it rain or shine, because we're under pavilions now and the food's inside the building, so appreciate that.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Next item under tab four is intergovernmental cooperative purchase, twenty-five dash oh-one-ninety-six, Toro Multi-Pro fifty-eight-hundred, three-hundred gallon sprayer for the Black Rock Golf Course.
Good morning, Karen Baker, buyer in the purchasing department.
George Schweitzer, Black Rock Golf Course Superintendent.
The first recommendation we have today is intergovernmental cooperative purchase, INTG twenty-five dash zero-one-ninety-six, for a Toro Multi-Pro fifty-eight-hundred, three-hundred gallon sprayer for the Black Rock Golf Course. Moved to authorize by resolution for the Black Rock Golf Course to purchase a Toro Multi-Pro fifty-eight-hundred, three-hundred gallon sprayer from Turf Equipment and Supply Company of Jessup, Maryland, for a total price of ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and forty-one cents, and to utilize another jurisdictions contract that was awarded by Sourcewell to the Toro Company. The new sprayer will be replacing the current nineteen ninety-seven sprayer, as it is no longer able to perform its intended duties and has surpassed its useful life by over a decade. The current sprayer will have the tank and spray rig removed, the engine tore down and repaired, and it will then be converted into a workman utility vehicle for on-course use. The Code of Public Laws of Washington County, Maryland, provides that the Board of County Commissioners may procure goods and services through a contract entered into by another governmental entity in accordance with the terms of the contract. The county will benefit from direct savings in the purchase of this sprayer because of the economies of scale this buying group leveraged. Funding is available in the department's capital budget for this purchase.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second on the floor to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five oh. Thank you. Next item under tab five is intergovernmental cooperative purchase, twenty-five dash oh-two-hundred, Massey Ferguson MF four-four-seven-ten tractor for the Department of Solid Waste.
Karen Baker, buyer in the purchasing department.
Dave Mason, Deputy Director with Solid Waste.
The second recommendation we have is intergovernmental cooperative purchase, INTG twenty-five dash zero-two-hundred, for a Massey Ferguson MF four-seven-ten tractor for the Department of Solid Waste. Moved to authorize by resolution for the Department of Solid Waste to purchase a Massey Ferguson MF four-seven-ten tractor from DW Ogg Equipment Company of Frederick, Maryland, for a total price of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, and to utilize another jurisdictions contract that was awarded by Sourcewell to Agco Corporation. The new tractor will replace the two thousand and four tractor, which is no longer able to perform its intended duties due to damage from an accident. A claim was filed, and the insurance company took the tractor for disposal. This tractor will be used to rake blown trash off the side slope at the Forty West Landfill and mow all locations, along with the paths to the monitoring wells. The Code of Public Laws of Washington County, Maryland, provides that the Board of County Commissioners may procure goods and services through a contract entered into by another governmental entity in accordance with the terms of the contract. The county will benefit from direct cost savings in the purchase of this tractor because of the economies of scale this buying group leveraged. Funding is available in the department's operating budget for this purchase.
Just a curious question. I guess the insurance from the one that was wrecked wasn't hardly anything because it was a two thousand and four, correct?
Correct. We got a little bit of money, but not much.
Yeah.
Dave, is that enclosed cab?
Yes.
Air-conditioned and heated?
Yes.
Good.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Okay, motion, second on the floor to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item under tab six is bid award PUR seventeen fifty-four, Pure Storage Support Subscription Renewal for the Information Systems Division.
Karen Baker, buyer in the purchasing department.
Josh Anil, CTO, Information Systems.
The last recommendation we have is bid award PUR seventeen fifty-four for Pure Storage Support Subscription Renewal for the Information Systems Division. Moved to award the procurement of a subscription renewal to GHA Technologies Incorporated of Scottsdale, Arizona, for a total sum bid price of one hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven and forty-four cents over a three-year term. Annual cost for the three-year term is fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents per year. Their pure storage equipment forms the foundation for all county server computer resources and is critical to the operation of all on-premise servers. The invitation to bid was advertised on the State of Maryland's e-Maryland Marketplace Advantage website, the county's website, in the local newspaper, and on the county's new electronic bidding site. Fifteen persons or companies registered or downloaded the bid document online, and on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, the county accepted bids. One bid was received. The contract term shall be for a one-year period beginning on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, with an option by the county to renew for two additional consecutive one-year periods. Funding is available in IT Department's operating budget account for this purchase.
Discussion? Motion and second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five oh. Thank you. Next item under tab seven is additional services, contract PUR sixteen ninety-six, Oracle Products and Services for Information Technology Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer.
Angie Hoffmanberger, Deputy Director of Budget and Finance, offer support and training.
This is for additional services, contract PUR one-six-nine-six, Oracle Products and Services for the Information Technology Department. Staff is requesting authorization to the addition, to the addition of services to the existing contract for Oracle Products and Services for the Human Resources Department with Mythix, LLC of Virginia Beach, Virginia, based on its quote in the amount of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, based on the contract awarded by Omnia Region Four Education Services Center Contract Number R-two-four-zero-two-zero-two. The current service under this contract provides cloud services, which consists of planning and budgeting, fusion financials, fusion purchasing, fusion transactional business intelligence, fusion self-service procurement, human capital management, payroll, and fusion time and labor. The additional services requested are for the Department of Human Resources for recruiting cloud services within the Oracle product. The cloud-based applications are suites that can help businesses streamline operations, automate processes, and make data-driven decisions. This contract was for two years, with an option by the county to renew for two additional consecutive one-year periods. Funding for this additional purchase is available in the capital budget.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under tab eight is intergovernmental cooperative purchase, twenty-five dash oh-two-oh-one, one-nine-hundred ECO, I guess that's twelve-yard combination sewer cleaner truck.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Bradshaw, Director of Environmental Management. Here today to move to authorize a resolution for the Department of Water Quality to purchase one nine-hundred Echo twelve-yard combination sewer cleaner truck from Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems of Easton, Maryland, in the amount of five hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents, and to use another jurisdictions contract that was awarded by Sourcewell. The Department of Water Quality is requesting purchase of one nine-hundred yard, nine-hundred Echo twelve, twelve-yard combination sewer cleaner to replace the two thousand and six international vaccon that we have. Once we receive the new truck, the old vaccon will be disposed of on GOV deals. We do have money available in the Department's CIP in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars for this purchase.
I had a question.
Yes.
Mark, what chassis is that going to be put on?
Freight liner.
Freight liner? Okay. And the one that is replacing, what do you expect, what would you expect to recover?
We've been looking on GOV deals, they bring around thirty to fifty thousand dollars, depending on the condition, so we think our old will be in that range.
Do you? Okay.
Excuse me, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
We should have had a second on that before we went to questions.
My apologies.
So we have a second now, okay.
Okay, and then, so you said a freight liner, and you were guessing maybe thirty thousand recovered, perhaps, for the old unit, perhaps? And there's no, no value with the, with the module that's in place, it's worn out?
It, it's starting to nickel and dimas. It's starting to have a lot of mechanical issues. I mean, it's approaching twenty years of life, so we feel the best would be to go ahead and replace it and dispose of the old one.
Okay, thanks.
Question I have, this is part of the enterprise fund.
Yes.
Correct? Yep. Okay, we have a motion and second, ready to vote. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five oh. Thank you. Next item under tab nine is the bid award PUR seventeen fifty, Town of Scharpsburg Water Service Upgrade.
Mark Bradshaw, Director of Environmental Management.
Joe Moss, Deputy Director of Engineering Services for Water Quality.
Moved to award the procurement of furnishing and delivering of water system upgrade parts listed on the bid form of proposal to Huntsberry Brothers Incorporated of Smithsburg, Maryland, in total bid amount of four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and fifty cents. The ITB was advertised on the State of e-Marketplace Advantage website and on the county's website and in the local newspaper, and on the county's new electronic bid site. Seven companies were represented at the pre-bid conference. Fifteen persons or companies registered and downloaded the bid documents online. The county owns and maintains the water, water meters and associated components of the water meter vaults throughout the water distribution of the town of Scharpsburg. Due to the age of these, due to the age of these water service backflow preventer devices were not installed at the time of services were installed, this project will upgrade the water service to the town of Scharpsburg to the current standards required by MDE for public drinking water, and we do have funds available in our current CIP to cover this expense.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Yes, okay, good.
So we own the system?
Yes, we own all the water meters.
Do we manage the system?
Yes.
Okay.
We run the system, we read all the water meters, we make all the necessary repairs on the mains up to the meter, from the meter to the house actually belongs to the residents.
Do you?
Yes, we do. Kelsey's office up there takes care of the billing for us.
I have, I have two questions. First one, will this include the installation of backflow preventers in the system or not? Or are they already in place?
They are not in place. We will, as part of our new meters sets, we are installing check valves that do not allow the flow to go backwards from the house into the system.
Okay.
That way, it prevents any contaminations from getting into our system.
So that will result in each homeowner, if they haven't already, installing an expansion tank in their home?
It, it should have no bearing on the expansion tanks in their home. They shouldn't need any expansion tanks, because we supply all the pressure. Our system supplies the pressure to them.
Okay, all right, just, that was my first question. Second question is, as water meters age, do, does their accuracy deteriorate?
It does. They have a life expectancy of ten to fifteen years, and we do have programmed into our CIP a cycle of by twelve years. We have money programmed to purchase new meters and replace them throughout the entire system.
Okay, so homeowners can expect perhaps a change in their consumption, or is that not accurate?
Generally, whenever water meters fail, they fail on the side of the customer, they tend to read less than actual.
Okay.
So once we put the new meters in, it may change a little bit, but generally, we try to get them changed out before they really get bad.
Okay, right.
And we monitor them, and if we see one starting to act a little funny, we'll go ahead and replace it even though it's out of cycle.
Understand. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under tab ten is intergovernmental cooperative purchase, twenty-five dash oh-one-ninety-four, lease for one new Caterpillar one-twenty AWD motor grater.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Mason, Deputy Director with Solid Waste. Yes, this is looking for a motion authorized by resolution for the Department of Solid Waste to lease the Caterpillar one-twenty all-wheel-drive motor grater from Caterpillar Financial Services, annual payment of eighty-four thousand dollars and eighty-two cents for the total sum of four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty thousand, four dollars and ten cents. This is a Sourcewell contract. We will be replacing a nineteen ninety-one John Deere six-seventy-B grater with thirty-eight hundred and fifty-six hours, which meets all our company policies, county policies for vehicle replacement. We are planning on selling the old grater on GOV deals. We use the grater for a variety of things, fixing roads, volunteer snow at Forty West Landfill.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under tab eleven, Smithsburg Wastewater Treatment Energy Consumption Incentive.
Good morning again, Joe Moss, Deputy Director for Engineering Services, Department of Water Quality. I've been working with Paton McAddison, Representative. I've been working with Paton Mc Addison representative that have customers that are working on projects that are designed with efficient equipment and controls, such as our Smithsburg wastewater treatment plant E N R upgrade. After reviewing our specs, the type of equipment and the controls that we are installing, their engineers estimate, estimate, estimate that we will use less energy than prior to the upgrade, which will result in us getting incentive one-time payment based on what our usage is after the project is complete and online. They estimate the incentive to be around twenty-five thousand dollars. This is basically just to enter into the agreement with them. They don't determine exactly what the final amount is until after everything's online and they determine, you know, what our usage is afterwards. But they speculate that it could be as much as twenty-five thousand or more, or less. They won't, they won't tie it to an exact number.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I have a question. How much is the cost? We're gonna give five thousand twenty-five thousand back.
Well, and again, it's based on consumption. The...
But for the upgrades, for the upgrades that we're talking about, the week.
Yeah, it's our project to upgrade the treatment plant. And then what they're speculating is because of the efficient equipment, you know, that we're putting in, we'll use less energy.
We need to do those upgrades anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Next item under tab twelve is the Schofield Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program, Crep easement proposal revised. Chris, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Boggs, Planning and Zoning Rural Preservation Administrator, bringing you this morning. As you can see in the notes, this Schofield project, the Schofield Crep easement project was approved by the board on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents in easement value. Not long after, probably, well, it was probably May sometime, D N R came to me asking that we revise the easement value in order to match current appraised value. So what they do is part of their easement valuation formula is based off of the prior year's mouth application appraisals. They take the average and then each year then that means that by working that average of appraised values into the easement formula, if appraisals go up one year, then the easement value formula will actually increase for Crep easements that year. If easement values for mouth go down, then easement values for Crep will go down. And it kind of uses those mouth appraised values for, you know, kind of a guideline for capping or making sure that, you know, easement offers aren't too low on certain years. At any rate, it was kind of a timing thing with this one. I brought this in in March, kind of right before the new appraisals came out, and D N R came back with me after I submitted all the documents saying, hey, look, we've got new appraisals, why don't we revise it? And of course, it affords the landowner, you know, a little over a thousand more dollars for their easement. So of course, anytime I can get more money for the landowners, I'm happy to do so. But, you know, of course, recommendation was to bring this back to the Commissioners since it was a change in values and it will change all the documentation. So, you know, today, we're looking for the recommended motion to be to approve Paul Aziz Schofield Crep easement project in the revised amount of sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty cents over thirty-two point six three easement acres, and of course, to adopt the ordinance associated with. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second to approve the revised amount.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as submitted the revised amount. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh. Thank you, Chris. Next item under tab thirteen is cost recovery billing for hazardous spill response.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer, seeking a motion to adopt the rate schedule as presented. Staff is requesting to implement a new billing practice to recoup the cost of responding to a hazardous spill incident. Per Maryland Code subsection three dash zero one one zero one and three dash one two zero one of the Courts and Judicial Proceedings article, the county can bill a motor carrier as that term is defined in the code, involved in an incident that requires hazardous spill response to recoup the cost of hazmat personnel, equipment, and materials. The Division of Emergency Services will submit an incident report and cost worksheet to the county attorney's office for review prior to the Office of Budget and Finance sending an invoice. The rates were developed by the Division of Emergency Services staff and are consistent with the rates that are charged by other jurisdictions. The rates for personnel and vehicle responses are a per-hour rate, while materials and equipment that are used, such as bags of loose absorbent, booms, mats, and socks, will be charged at the current rate to replace.
Kelsey, just a quick question. On that chart you gave us, level three, which is a major hazmat incident requiring greater alarm units, it says level three, two thousand, is that two thousand a flat fee an hour, including?
I think that's just the base fee prior to the additional...
So it's always two thousand for that and then plus per hour per the vehicle comes?
Correct.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, thank you. Next item under tab fourteen, F Y twenty-five budget adjustment, P P E ordered.
Again, Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer, seeking a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five budget adjustment as presented. Staff is requesting approval for a budget adjustment to move funds for personal protective equipment that was ordered but not received by the June thirty deadline to the capital fund. Transfer of funds from the general fund to the capital fund for the purchase of personal protective equipment for the Division of Emergency Services staff. Staff ordered one hundred and thirty sets of P P E using available funds in the F Y twenty-five operating budget. However, the P P E was not received by fiscal year end on June thirty. Transferring the funds to the capital fund will allow the department to complete the purchase in F Y twenty-six when the P P E is received in invoice. The total amount for this budget adjustment is five hundred and six thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
So that mon... that money for the five hundred and six thousand was in the general fund, it carried over?
If it remains in the operating fund, it won't carry over, but if we transfer it to their capital project, it will.
I'm just wondering, but we planned on purchase, the purchase the previous year, fiscal year?
Correct. It's already been ordered, so we have to... It's already been ordered, we just didn't receive it by our fiscal year deadline per audit standards.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. We have a motion, do we have a second for approval?
Second.
Okay, motion second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh. Thank you. Next item under tab fifteen, F Y twenty-sixth, operating budget adjustment website maintenance.
The next budget adjustment I have for you is for fiscal year twenty-six operating budget. Staff is requesting approval of a budget adjustment to fund website, website maintenance services. The continued performance, security, and scalability of the county's WordPress-based web services are critical to maintaining public communication, digital service delivery, and internal operational workflows. To ensure the system's reliability and responsiveness to involving needs, it is recommended that a qualified contractor be engaged to support the WordPress server infrastructure. Staff is requesting the transfer of forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars from funds that were set aside for Time to Care Act premiums that will not be required in fiscal year twenty-six to the information technology department to fund the addition of these services. And that amount is forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh. Thank you. Next item, tab sixteen, F Y twenty-sixth, operating budget adjustment, upgrade of position seventeen eighty-nine.
The last budget adjustment I have for you is for the F Y twenty-sixth operating budget. Staff is requesting approval of a budget adjustment to fund the approved upgrade of position one seven eight nine. On June tenth, twenty twenty-five, the Board of County Commissioners approved the upgrade of position one seven eight nine from a help desk analyst one at grade eight to a cloud virtualization support engineer at a grade sixteen. Staff is requesting the transfer of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars from funds set aside for the Time to Care Act premiums that will not be required in fiscal year twenty-six to the information technology department to fund this upgrade. And that amount is sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under tab seventeen, Washington County Board of Social Services, appointment. Dawn?
Good morning, Dawn Marcus, County Clerk. On behalf of the Washington County Board of Social Services, I am requesting a motion to appoint Allison Palmer to serve a first full three-year term from July first of twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. This is not a paid board.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh. Thank you. Next item under tab eighteen, Tri-County Council for Western Maryland, appointment. Dawn?
Dawn Marcus, County Clerk. On behalf of the Tri-County Council for Western Maryland, I am requesting a motion to appoint Mayor Bill Green as a Washington County municipality representative.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Next item under tab nineteen, Washington County Historical Society Commissioner contingency funding request.
Thank you. Washington County Historical Society has submitted a request for commissioner contingency funding to provide sort of stopgap funding for them in the current fiscal year due to a loss of a grant fund that they had received in prior years. They requested two years of support. However, I'm not recommending that we provide two years of support at this time. I'm recommending that we approve their funding request of fifteen thousand dollars at this time to provide for operating support for the Miller House Museum. It does provide sold-out programs, history-themed bus trips, themed exhibitions, and walking tours here in Washington County. Additionally, this funding will provide for needed facility improvements for their HVAC and roof repairs of the Miller House. Open that up to any questions at this time.
I would support it for a one-year request. We can review it next year if the need is there.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to support the one-year.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion and a second, ready to vote. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh. Thank you. Next item under tab twenty, statement regarding open meetings compliance board decisions issued July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Statement regarding decision of Open Meetings Act Compliance Board, nineteen O M C B Opinions one seventy-eight. A complaint was made alleging that the Board of County Commissioners violated the Open Meetings Act by warning the complainant not to engage in offensive or harassing behavior and by prohibiting him from attending the board's open meetings for six months. The Open Meetings Compliance Board concluded that the Board of County Commissioners did not, did not violate the Act by warning the complainant not to engage in harassing or offensive behavior. However, the Opening Meetings Compliance Board did conclude that the board violated the Open Meetings Act by prospectively banning the complainant from its open meetings for six months. Nineteen O M C B Opinion one eighty-six. A complaint was made alleging that the Board of County Commissioners violated the Open Meetings Act by omitting from a meeting agenda a known item of business, specifically a vote to approve a financial incentive for a business to locate in the county. On July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, the Open Meetings Compliance Board issued an advisory opinion. The Compliance Board found no violation of the Act based on the agenda's omission of the vote. However, the Compliance Board found the description of another, another agenda item, a staff presentation about the business was too vague to satisfy the Act. Decisions of the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board can be found on the website of the Maryland Attorney General. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved, five-minute recess, and we'll go into closed session.